I'm not making sure you don't.
So now you can see at least there's. Just what you hear. Steve, Christine, are you able to hear us? Somebody just logged on. Okay, maybe they'll know.
I can hear you now.
Dennis, are you able to hear us?
Yes.
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, so this is. He can be someone's laptop. So we're just using the microphone that's up. Steve Kirby can hear it though. Okay. We're just using the microphone as part of that record rather than these right now. So. And Steve unmuted himself. That's not the original problem. That's. There he is. He looks unmuted.
I am. Can you hear me?
Steven, you can't hear you.
Okay. Someone's going to have to allow me to share because the. Share icon is off.
It'll just take a second. Apologies for the technical difficulties, folks. We're using a new system here and some new people. You don't have the presentation. He certainly wasn't. But I didn't. I didn't send it to the work. I just kept it as a copy.
The share was on earlier and then it went off.
Okay.
I think you have to make me a presenter.
Yep, you're all set.
Okay, all right. That's got it.
Hey, we're all learning here. We're all learning.
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. My name is Steve Kirby. I'm with the Vertex Companies. I'm here to present a update on the Community Center project. I also have Peter and Libby Terowski that are on from Terowski Two, the architects. And I see a few other people from that are involved in the project. Let me see if I can go the next step and actually get my presentation. Up. You're with me? Are you seeing that on the screen, Joe?
Yes, we can. Yeah, you just gotta make it full screen so we can see it.
Is that better?
Should be some kind of.
I have it as a PDF, so. It may be the issue. Okay, why don't I get started? I'm going to essentially go through the project a little bit as a narrative, and then I have a number of progress photos to go through, sort of going back a little ways from where we are now, but this is sort of the first update that we've had. Construction progress, schedule and progress, foundation and slab are complete. I think, as everybody knows, the retaining wall on the west side of the project along the brook is complete. Underground utilities have been ongoing. One of the problems that we're really not surprised about, but it is, we haven't got out of it yet, is there is a fair amount of ledge that we're encountering with the underground utilities, especially because the drainage and water and so forth are deep. So I know you probably heard the whole RAM working almost on a daily basis over there. Water and sewer, street opening permits are in the process of being applied to with the mass DOT. There's some paperwork that had to be done. Dennis was gracious enough to be involved in to, because the DOT wanted the applicant to be the town of Upton. So as far as the water and sewer utilities, everything is very up to the edge of the of the project onsite. The next step is to go into the street for those tie-ins. I think everybody's seen that the perimeter and interior wall framing has started. The glue laminated lumber and prefabricated roof trusses have been delivered and installation has been started. We were utilizing a crane that has since demobilized this week, and the rest of it, though, we'll be doing either by hand or with the lull. Hutter Construction Corporation has submitted a request for a six-week time extension. We have reviewed that. We've reviewed that with the with the building committee. The first step in response to them is asking them for a recovery schedule, see if they can make up the time, and also to show that they are making an effort to make up their time by putting in overtime hours, working on Saturdays, and increasing manpower. So we haven't denied the request, but we haven't approved it either. We want to see some effort by the contractor to to make up that time. And we have had some reported material delivery delays based on supply chain issues, one being the generator. There's an issue with the cedar shakes that we're working through. Some select windows have a longer lead time that they're actually being told at this point, but we're working on trying to get those freed up earlier. And then there's some some paint for some sheet metal items that seems to be a long lead item. I think we might find some more, but we have asked them from the beginning to prioritize their long lead item materials, because we all know that, you know, this post pandemic, there still has been problems getting materials either with trucking or with manufacturers. As far as the total project budget status, currently we're on budget. We're maintaining the construction contingency by issuing a number of value engineering credit requests. Essentially items that will not impact either the function or the operation of either the library or the COA, but items that we deemed that we could save some money by not not having the contractor install them. As a matter of fact, we've had, at this point, 32 of 35 value engineering credit requests that have been accepted that have essentially gone to offset mostly the additional ledge. Again, ledge continues to be encountered, and there are unit prices in the contract that the contractor has to abide by, and it's a matter of measuring the quantity out in the field with with the clerk that we have supplied that's there every day. Furniture fixture and equipment bids have been awarded and the contracts have been issued. So we know on past projects that Vertex has done. Some furniture has also been long lead tight, especially the shelving for the for the libraries. We wanted to get those issued and released as soon as we could. IT and audiovisual systems are being reviewed. That procurement is through the town, not the GC. The GC provides the infrastructure within the building for that, so we're looking at getting those items also released. The security system was included in the general contractor's contract, but we did just have a meeting to try and incorporate the Verkata system that was recently installed in the town hall into the the community center, so that we have a system that is more standardized for for the town. So that's that's being looked at. We had a meeting with the electrician, the general contractor, the mechanical engineer, excuse me, electrical engineer, architect, and ourselves to review that. We also, there's been a grant that's been awarded to the town for fiber optic. So we do have spare conduit available for that, so that there should be no issue with getting fiber optic into the building. Proposed change orders. There's been 47 proposed change orders submitted by Hutter to date. Again, many are in response to the value engineering requests that we have issued to supplement the construction contingency. All the PCOS are being reviewed by Terowski and Vertex, and that will be ongoing throughout the project. Change orders, five change orders have been issued to date. They've been reviewed and recommended to the building committee by Vertex and Terowski. Total of those change orders is $11,660.59, and that includes $94,000 in change of ledge removal. So we're offsetting a lot with the with the value engineering credit change orders, just keeping that that contingency where where we want to keep it. Again, construction contingency, if all the all the PCOS that have been submitted and all potential PCOS that that we know that are out there are approved, we're still at a little over 98% of our original contingency of $379,000. So that's one of the big goals is to is to maintain that contingency, because we still have a ways to go on the project, and we know we still have ledge in areas that we're going to have to remove. Right now, we've only decreased the contingency by a little over $7,500. I got photo documentation next. I just wondering if you want to, if you have any questions now, do you want me to wait till I finish?
Dennis, you can see. Now recording the pictures if you'd like. Sure. Did you want to go first?
All right, I can run through these very quickly.
So Stephen, just a quick question before you run through. You had mentioned a six-week delay that the contractor was asking for. If that's accepted, what would that put the proposed completion date at? And as the second part of the question, were they asking for that additional time based on material delays and receiving materials, or was it something unforeseen?
They were actually. What they proposed for their time extensions were a number of things that we essentially rejected as either, you know, being part of the contract or somewhat their responsibility. You know, they were citing the removal of ledge and unsuitable materials, which is part of their contract. They were also citing the delay on on the delivery of the glue lamps, but they had forward their submittals late in in the process, so it it was something that we really couldn't approve based on how they presented it. And to answer your first question, that would put our completion date into the into mid mid-January, third week of of January, as opposed to substantial completion right now is is the middle of December, and then there's another couple of weeks of final, so. Okay, again, going to the the progress photos. And here's just a typical example. This is the whole RAM removing trench ledge for the storm drainage system. You can see where the drainage manhole is deep in the ground, so they have to essentially open that ledge up, and in this case, they're they're making the trench for the piping that that's going to be coming out of that that manhole. Next photo is just the construction of the retaining wall along the west side, sort of a cross section of of how it's put together. And this is the final product. You know, this this area here will be, you know, the patio is coming in from this end, and you can walk through. There's an entry to the library about midpoint here. You could see my my pointer. Next photo, essentially going back to just a quick shot of foundations being installed back in February. Next photo is an aerial view just prior to the slab pour back in April. We did pour the the slab on the 18th of April using a pump truck. Couple photos of the of the pour and then starting to do the finish. And then the aerial view during the the pour. All that yellow is vapor barrier that goes down before the before the concrete to keep moisture out of the floor system. You can also see that the structural steel had been erected at that time. There was there was not much structural steel. That's the extent of it. This is a wood-framed building. And then we're getting into the the May May timeframe where they're starting to do the installation of the perimeter wall framing. This happens to be the east elevation on the VFW side. There's a view of the north elevation, which is along Route 140. Another photo of framing, this is in the large program room. This this framing here was is up in the attic area floor in order to carry the mechanical units that are located in that attic space. We did have a crane onsite to erect some of the larger glue lamps and roof trusses. Again, that 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 was demobilized this week. And next is going to be a series of photos of the glue lamps. This is actually finished product that's going up. This is what you'll see in many areas of the library. See, this is this is the the stack area of the libraries here, that COA is in the in the kitchen is in the background that's facing north. This will be the aisle, and you'll have your your light monitors will be up in this area here. That photo of them putting up some of the roof trusses. This is down in the children's area, adjacent to the the playground on the south end of the building. Again, the frame is putting up this sheeting on the outside with with some of the trusses already in place. It's on the COA end of the project. Another photo of the the glue lamps going in place using the crane. Again, there's there's, like I said, this, a lot of this will be your finished product. These are recent photos. Actually, you can see the building is starting to come together. Again, they're starting to put some of the the framing in between the glue lamps for the roof system in this photo. And then again, you've got roof trusses on either end. This is this area here is more the mechanical side and heading towards the service area towards the the street and and close to the to the culvert. And the next is just a series of aerial views that was taken on the 14th, sort of going around the the building. You can get a better view of what the building is going to look like. This is facing southwest. This is facing basically south southeast. You can see, again, this is this is the service area in here, mechanical rooms. The kitchen is in here, the the large program room that'll have the cathedral space. COA is in this area here, and the library is takes up this section in here. And just a view facing north. And the last picture is the area view facing facing west. I will stop sharing now unless you want me to go back to anything.
Great. Thank you very much. Maureen, do you have any questions? Do you have anything else?
And one other question.
Great. Just what are some of the, or is there a way to get a list of the value engineering items that you have made the decision to sort of check off the list to to recover some of that contingency money?
Yeah, we can. We can. We can get you a list. Right now, they're memorializing change orders that we've issued to the to the contractor, but I can certainly forward that to you so you can take a look.
Yeah, no, that'd be great. I know it's like 35. It sounds like it's about 33 or 32 or 35 items for almost $100,000. So I'd just be curious what some of those things are. There's some details, but overall, this looks phenomenal. Great, great progress. Great to hear that it's largely on track. It looks awesome. Those glue lamps look great. I don't think they were something that was seen my, I wasn't sort of visualizing. Drive by and look at those. It's really impressive, and you can see, get a sense for how beautiful the inside of that building is going to be. So really nice to see. Thank you.
You're welcome.
As I said, Mr. Kirby, he's keeping, he's putting his feet to the fire.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't happen by accident. That's for sure. I I can't get a better than this.
You see, he's struck there on Saturday, so he's putting the ten in, that's for sure. And again, as you mentioned, with the glue lamps, we've seen what the outside of the building will look like, but we really don't know what you envision the inside will look like. So those photos that you provided gives us some sort of an insight of what we'll see.
Yeah. So. Yeah. Yeah, very, very much.
Okay.
Mr. Matelli, I think somewhere in the some of the schematics, maybe there are several bendings of what the inside will.
But noticing those details like the limbs and stuff, like I've seen those, but I, it's just like, sort of what sticks and what doesn't, but yeah. Great.
I think sometimes you might focus on the shelving and check all the book areas and how it's going to be more or less an empty building.
Yeah.
It gives you just a different perspective.
And if I could, if I may, just 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 one thing, according to the most recently brought in the financial, with respect to the community center building construction, the line, we have 20, we have spent 20.31% of the budget so far, and that's to the end.
Excellent. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Bye, Steve. Next up, we have Kenny Costa, and we've got a little time to make up. Kenny, since we're off to a slow start, but I don't want to, don't want to shorten, so look forward to hearing your update. Good to see you.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'll start off with fiscal year '22, year end. As you can imagine, it's a busy time of year. Approximately, there's 10 days remaining in the fiscal year. Departments are making final purchases before June 30th. Updated budget reports were emailed yesterday to to departments so they can see where they they stand. We're in the we're in the process of planning year-end budget transfers to be reviewed by Finance Committee and also the Board of Selectmen, and that would be before July 15th. Inflation has caused issues for some departments, for example, fuel, you know, vehicle maintenance. So those are some of the issues that I've been seeing in different department budgets. But I believe most departments, they will solve their any budgetary issues within their own department. As you know, fiscal year '23, it begins on July 1st, so happy new fiscal year to come. Departments will have new budgets, and I will send out budget reports for departments to review. We typically have two or three payments that are due on July 1st. Our pension versus regional payment is usually, it's due on July 1st, and then also the Mendon Upton Regional School District assessment is also due on July 1st, so we have some two, we have two large payments going out. So we'll be processing invoices for two fiscal years at the same time. It becomes a little challenging, but departments, they do a great job with the transition of fiscal year '22 going into '23. An update on the treasure collector's office. We continue to advertise for the treasure collector's position. As you know, it's a it's a tough labor market out there right now. I'm seeing the same issues with other communities. The good news is we have an internal candidate for the Assistant Treasure Collector position. We also have an experienced team to reconcile cash and receivables. So we do have some, you know, finance director, you know, assistance with year end. So I feel like we have a good team with experience that can help us close the fiscal year. So we're still hopeful that we can close the books by September, October timeframe. Another thing I'd like to discuss is OPEB, actuational services under GASB 7475 will begin this summer. For our next report, it will be a full valuation. And OPEB, just to remind everybody, it's retiree health insurance. That's what OPEB, other post-employment benefits. Our net OPEB liability for fiscal year '21, it was $7.6 million, so I do expect this liability to grow probably between the $8 and $9 million range. I have one more item, just a quick note regarding borrowing. As you can see, interest rates are on the rise. I did exchange emails with our financial advisor from Unibank. Our refunding and debt issuances were definitely timely the last two years. As you recall, two years ago, we saved about $500,000 with a refunding. And then a year ago, we issued debt of $12 million, and we had a 1.86 true interest cost to the town. And just to, just so you can compare with the current conditions, we would be looking at 3.6, 3.8 at this time if we were looking to issue debt. So I just wanted to, you know, share that with you, that I think the the refunding and the borrowing the last two years, I think they were very timely. I think they were very smart on the town's town side. I think it was a wise decision. And that's all I have for now.
Understood, Kenny. Thank you very much. It's great to hear and have a firm, so. Maureen, I want to start with you. Any questions?
Not at this time.
Sidney?
I have no questions.
All right. My question is around the staffing for the treasure collector. Have there been any applicants at all? Have we had any interviews, or are we just not getting anything? Or are we just not getting good candidates?
At this time, it's been a challenge. You know, we we have received resumes. We have, just we haven't scheduled any interviews, and we haven't seen anybody with municipal experience, you know, out there, you know, so it's just been a tough, tough labor market. We're hopeful that, you know, in the next few months, that that will improve. But at this time, it's been a challenge, and we've been seeing that in other communities as well.
Great. Okay, well, that's out of our control in some ways, but if there's anybody on the phone or in the meeting that has any leads, definitely pass them along to Mr. Costa.
Please do.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if these execute, it might be Technology Committee, retrofit, and contract. So Steve should be on, yes? Laura, yours?
I can tell you.
So the Technology Committee reviewed proposals that we received from our current IT network managed services provider, retrofit, and we had several comments about their proposals. We're in the process of resolving those comments with retrofit, and essentially, the position that the committee came to was that we are now going to be relying on the Mendon Upton School System and Joe Lakey and his team for onsite, what's called Level One Support, and we will only be using retrofit for And we will only be using retrofit for remote network monitoring for cybersecurity issues and for off-hour support on nights and weekends at the police and fire station. So we're working with retrofit to get those proposals straightened out for those two services. And hopefully, before the end of June, we can sign an agreement with them for those limited functions. The longer term goal is that we're gonna, we're willing to give retrofit the opportunity to prove themselves that they are capable and responsible to handle these services. And if they do, that's great. If they don't, we'll be looking to replace them with another vendor down the road. But this gives us some time to, again, get, get the Mendon Upton team in place and get them running, and also to keep the network monitoring piece going in, in the short term. So that's, those are the two proposals, and hopefully it will get an updated agreement to sign from them in the next couple of days.
So I can go a bit further to my, me adding that at the Technology Committee, one of the things to be recognized was that we basically have spoke with services. Steve had identified, as you mentioned, some changes that we need to make. So I don't have a final contract for you. So that, but because the services runs from July first through June thirtieth, want to try to get a contract in place prior to, before its next meeting, which is July twelfth. So the town does utilize from me a standard contract document. It's what I proposed. It's basically working with Steve to finalize that contract. We then would send a copy of that out to you just to make sure that at least you don't have any issues. If you have any issues, just let me know if we need to schedule a short, quick meeting if anything arose. But it should be pretty standard. It's, it's scope services that Technology Committee previously discussed before. And one thing is that Technology Committee did want to have some level of flexibility because it was basically three different things that they were providing. And that if we didn't need support or one of those items, we could basically back out and have the others remaining. So they wanted some form of flexibility. At their technology meeting, they did vote to make that recommendation to enter the contract that their provision changed.
Okay. Questions?
The only question really would be the forty-one thousand dollars, that's not going to change. Even if you move pieces of that contract, you said there was about three different things that are kind of up in the air.
Right. So that, that's, that's the upper, upper end, and that's what was quoted for, for this contract period. Even though it exists in contract, that's language that basically says both is able to separate from this agreement, that there would be base notice and all those things. You know, and this is going to give us an opportunity to really identify with the school department, what level of service we're able to maintain, and then work for the next year to identify whether or not we need to make changes to the services. So just maintains the flexibility that we've always had from the other.
Yeah, that's just one other. Great follow-up. Steve had mentioned retrofit. We have not used any capacity before.
No, we've, I've provided our ITs for our last Steve, if I'm wrong, three years?
Um, we've been working with retrofit. Is that the question? Yeah, we've been working with them for probably close to, closer to four years, I think. It's been a very, it's been a very tumultuous relationship. Sometimes it, it worked well, other times it was not very, very good at all. So again, we're, we would like to give them one more chance to prove that they are, can live up to our expectations. And if they do, that's great. If they don't, like I said, we'll be putting together a, an RFP and looking for another, another company to replace them.
Based on this earlier comment, since that's what threw me, the curveball you sent me, we're going to move on. We're just trying. That's not, that's the. So they have a, have a.
Yes. Yes, and that's primarily for police and fire. If I ran into an issue with my computer, I'd wait until the next day. And that's where having a shared IT position is, is going to be. There's a mission critical item. Impacts fire, police, or DPW, we want that. That's.
I have driven many creases of last year.
Oh, um, because we're, uh, so that sort of has the back out of the hardware. We have the shared services. So right now, we were looking at, compared to this, this, we are almost doubling what the IT budget is going to be. And when we entered into the shared agreement, we saw like the total with retrofit and share total costing about eighty. So it was more than the sixty we were paying for this year, but it's much less compared to what gets rejected if they were to continue with the onsite support as well as. So that's why we ended up dividing off doing the share, keeping retrofit for the twenty-four hour support. And again, that, because we're coming in towards the end of this year, if for next year, we go back out and we look for a different vendor, okay. But we're coming in right at the end of this year, doing this for currently, at least it's a known quantity. And I think it was even at the last meeting that Kelly mentioned, this is sort of what they're set up to do, this type of monitoring twenty-four hour support. And we're very confident with a person that's going to be helping from the school district satisfied that a level wants.
Very good.
I see it Thursday.
Uh, any other questions?
I have none.
Not at all. Make a motion.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to authorize the town manager to finalize and execute the contract with retrofit for network monitoring and IT service in the amount of forty-one thousand dollars for the period of July first, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second, Maureen, you have a lie.
That's I'm a lie.
Steve Mattalian.
You have a section of the board. Thank you. Today, so you have the fiber optic municipal area network contract.
I can handle that. All right. Great. So Technology Committee also reviewed the, and worked with the IT director for the schools to prepare a quote for installation of the fiber optic municipal area network. This, this vendor is off the state of us, so we don't have to bring up department. School department has experience with them as well, and they're highly regarded as far as for the support. So the money has previously had, at the foreboard, we received one hundred and forty-three thousand dollar, sorry, two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars through IT grant for fiber. So this is one of those components, basically most important, bringing up cable through from utility poles, connect all of our facilities. You know, we're working with community center to make sure that, and get to that. And we're basically, the money should be getting to us at any point. So we want to get going. So we don't run into one at the timing issues with performing materials, but also make sure that we can take care of getting it done as quickly as possible for us to continue to escalate.
Awesome.
So it's the same thing where we don't have, I don't, I have the scope of services identifying what they're doing. I'll be working to finalize that and do more standard form immediately send it out. So if you take your eye and ask any questions for finalizing.
Okay. Questions?
I have no questions. I think that expert, there's a lot of information in here.
All right. Make a motion.
Move that I move that the Board of Select vote to authorize the town manager to finalize and execute contract, contract operation, installation of the fiber optic municipal area network in the amount of four thousand dollars.
Second motion?
I have unanimous action. I, I'm gay.
I am gay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Thank you.
You're calling them with expecting Brett, right?
Yes.
Not yet. We'd like that. And for folks that are interested, the package is on the website that we're looking at that has all of the information. And there's some nice maps in there where the fiber optic is going to be run and sort of what that's looking like. So that's interesting if folks are interested. All right. Next up, we have Conservation Commission with in and Fowler Land Survey Contract.
This is Bill Taylor. I'm here on behalf of the Conservation Commission. We are contracting for a boundary service of the, a boundary survey of the mechanic in Fowler Street land. I solicited five quotes and got two responses. The response from both of the responders was twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. I'm recommending that we choose Waterman Design Associates. The other respondent was Graz Engineering. Waterman Design Associates can complete the survey well ahead of the date that I had identified in the request of October fifteenth. They're talking about getting it done by August first, which would be within the initial period that we have to close the transaction. So we wouldn't have to ask for any extensions, which would, there'd be less legal costs associated with it. Their quote for extra monuments was a little bit more than Graz Engineering, but I'm pretty confident we're not going to have to ask for more monuments than the ten that are already included. And given the timeliness of the, of the survey and the legal impact, not having to ask for extensions, I felt, I feel that Waterman Design Associates is the best choice.
Questions?
Yes, I actually do have a question. In the cover letter, it mentions, and as you mentioned, Bill, there's ten monuments included in the scope of work. When I looked at the contract, I, I think it's under compensation. It mentions the cost, twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. It says plus five hundred dollars per monument, but it doesn't mention the ten monuments included.
Well, that's, that's included, that's included in the rest of the contract documentation. It's, it's in this, it's in the RFP. It's in their, it's in their scope of work. So I didn't feel like it was necessary to call that out as such.
Okay. I just didn't see it in the six pages of this document. So as long as you've got it covered elsewhere, I'm fine with that.
Yep.
Maureen?
All set.
All right. I am all set. Make a motion.
I move the Board of Select vote to authorize the town manager to execute contract, looking to be able to, about two hundred bay land, show us plus forty-eight, fifty-five on up and assesses map. Fourteen in the amount, twenty-eight thousand five hundred plus five hundred dollars for each additional monument.
Uh, second motion, all those in favor? I oppose unanimous action of the board. Next up is the town manager report.
So there's a lot of stuff that's going on in town. Let's sort of dive right in. From DPW perspective, or if you're not there, so there were, I haven't fleshed me, can't reach, we've been having so. These are some of their annual items that are part of the store water management plan. Make sure that our clients have a small water permit. Catch basic meaning, we'll pay by July first. People may have noticed the last couple of weeks, we had crews out doing sewer lining. They're ninety percent done. They're going to be completed by the middle of July. Also, our DPW staff has been out painting stop lines with summer, contract out doing the, the striking of the rose. They've been doing some tree removal that most of the time, and finalized and paving bits to go out in the next couple of weeks, we'll get a copy of the list of streets to be working on. And then lastly, from the water department, their consumer compliance report is going to be coming out. That's the report that identifies testing that they do to make sure that residents know that they have safe drinking water. So keep an eye out for that. For fire department, just a reminder that on Saturday, we'll have the fire works at DDT. I'll see everyone up there. They also just received new gear. It's basically an off-road vehicle that allows them to go in areas that are smaller, that's smaller than a truck, gives them more access specifically also with extracting, it's a hard to say force. Also, the fire department has worked and completed updates to the town emergency community notification system. That's our system of damage prevention. Or brave, not brave. What that does is if there is any sort of incident, it allows for us to communicate, it's for like the first night of law. We previously had to go red to let residents know. In this instance, what it allows for is localized notification. So we can do sections of town or even neighborhoods or sections of street. So if they work to a water line or something happened, they can notify a specific area rather than sending out. Town clerk, as was mentioned last meeting, Kelly is going to be resigning as our town clerk after twenty-one years' service to the town. Her last day of work will be July eighth. So she's going to be bringing the medicine and her department, endeavoring to make sure there's going to be a lot of opportunity for her touch base and to say goodbye. Also, last week, the Massachusetts House and Senate passed compromise election reform bill, basically making permanent some of the changes that happened because of COVID, where voter registration deadline changing, also allowing for mail-in voting. Reason to mention this is that people start to get postcards in the mail-in, giving them options. We do have a state primary coming up September sixth, so day after Labor Day. So it's going to be pretty busy for the next couple of months with the town clerk between that primary as well as the state election on November eighth. The library has gone live with some of its online registration for programs. You have to visit the library's website for basically a plethora of opportunities to enroll kids in camps over summer and programs. The health department, just trying to get through these as quickly as possible. Health department is going to be getting a new supply of open tests, looking at getting around thousands, twelve hundred. Those will be made available for general public. More information on those. Also, on July ninth, will be hazardous waste day. That's going to be held at DPW. Published on the town's website and social media. For recreation department, beach is now open seven days a week. So it's getting a good amount of use. And today was day two of kids at play. And just, they want to remind people that their concert series starts on June twenty-ninth. And lastly, we're sort of related to human resources. We had something earlier. We do have a number of positions that are open in town. You know, quite frankly, every single town is Facebook, some Facebook is challenged. If any residents, any employees, anyone in town wants to see a listing, visit the town website. We do have a posting on our social media page as well on opportunities, everything from police, fire, charge routes office, lifeguards, at the beach. Basically, you know, there's a lot of opportunities here for people to work in on.
Awesome.
And at least would like to be one special thing. Officially completed my first month here. So just really would like to thank everyone for being supportive and getting me up to speed. So just really would like to thank everyone for being so supportive and getting me up to speed. Learning a lot of people, learning a lot of things about the town and I really enjoy myself this.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. A lot of great work. Questions?
No, I have no questions. Twenty months, so one month.
One month. Okay, just yeah. Any questions for you? Awesome. I would just like to, you know, take a moment on the fact that the board and I know my fellow board members also agree with wanting to thank and recognize Kelly Pellet for her years of service to the town. It's a, it's a, she did a lot over the years. She wore many hats. And there's a lot of progress that was made in this town under her leadership and she will be missed. She's very excited for her and, and the opportunity that she's chosen to accept. And I wanted to recognize all the value, the hard work, the many roles, the selflessness, the long nights, the meetings, et cetera, that she, she was a critical part of and her leadership helped drive. So thank you.
Yeah, just to, she asked, she all asked. Yeah, just to follow up a little because she had mentioned a couple of big changes that happened under her 21 years of tenure, which is an elected position as town clerk. So we think about that and it seems like so long ago, an elected position there and also the renovation of town hall. So you think it just those two, you know, files that were considered in and of itself, it's quite a bit. So.
Steve, you're just the chairman of the committee, the renovation committee.
Yeah. Yes, I believe I knew that. That's something.
All right. Any public inputs? Public comment? Go ahead. It's just Larry.
Mr. Chairman, through you, through Mr. Manigot. My recollection is that the governor's honor for remote meetings is supposed to aspire to July 15th. And that the Senate budget version had an opportunity to extend it to December 23rd. Have you heard anything more about what's going to happen with that? Because I know this is the whole being big change.
So basically, I heard no movement from exactly what people had stated. And knowing the state, knowing how they approached previous headlines, I expected on
July 14th.
July 14th, 50. I expected, I think they were a day later in the last time they meant extended. Knowing that there's a lot of interest of residents, the public and communities are continuing it. I really would hope that they do finalize that in advance to make sure that it can continue in some, some fashion. But the second we know, or at least it's then notified by our local representative, this will make sure. Committee, committee members so that they know whether or not they can continue being your holding. And if not, we're going to have to come up with some creative ways to accommodate everyone and fill in all of the public buildings.
Any other public comment?
That was more of an FYI type situation.
Thanks, sir. Great. Next up is appointments and resignations. First up, we have a resignation. Edward Phillips from the cemetery commission. Mr. Phillips, I know has done a lot of work over the past few years on this. Would you like to express, you know, gratitude for all the work, the hours, time, effort and energy that he put into it? Take a motion or any comment?
Just a quick comment. There's, I won't read it. It's four paragraphs long. Mr. Phillips did a great job early with the acquisition paperwork cemetery. Can't be underscored how much time I have to put into that. I'm sad to see him step away from the board, but folks should, should read what he, what he puts in, send the paper. It's on the website. I'm just going to bring that on people's attention, but I can make a motion.
Okay, great.
I move in the board to select and vote to accept the resignation of Edward Phillips from the cemetery commission effective June 30th, 2022. Advertise vacancy and schedule a joint meeting, cemetery commission on July 12th, 2022. Go to vacancy until the 2023 useful.
Second down.
Aye. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unsectioned. Beautiful. Next up, we have the DPW building committee appointment. I think we have moderator here. We have Dennis here. And so the way that we will go through this is what? Do you think, Joe, there's, what's the easiest way? I know we've, there should be a vote first to create sort of our vote or just go through one person at a time and finish it pretty straightforward? So.
So reading the Bible, what basically is your essentially three bodies working against one. You each get one vote. So three of you together, town moderator and department.
Right.
I think one of the questions this ends up being, because the board had originally considered some of these applicants that marched. And I was looking through just to see if anyone was on the call. Not knowing if, essentially it's, it basically three voting vote was essentially done, but with the department head and the town moderator. If there was more discussion, then it's pretty easy doing that. The one question ends up being situation from our last meeting. Do you want to identify a term? Is it something that, and I just took took sort of like a stab or, and basically everyone can discuss, you know, whether it should differ from being, seeing the project through to completion. Do we want to have a bookend as far as well completion? But if in two years, we want them to come back and do it, do it as, as one year or basically just no limit, just one. So I did include a quote from town council. We did opine that our language is adequately vague to give us some level of ability to interpret it a couple of different ways. And, you know, at, at some other point, but love feedback so that if we wanted to provide more clarity or to allow some more of a process to reevaluate your project, committee to have that as part of proposal management to the bottom.
Okay, great. And is that something that the moderator, I mean, I don't know if there's any disagreement on this. Maybe a moot point, that the moderator, the director and the board sort of make that decision about duration? Or is that solely the board's decision? And that the question of the moderator and the director really has to do with the actual appointments? I guess it's the latter, but. So with that, do you, do you, Steve and Maury, have a sense of whether you want to continue the past practice of appointing these for a year? Or town council's recommendation, it sounds like it's to appoint them to the completion project. So we can obviously do that as well. Do you have a preference?
I prefer. I prefer year to year. I just feel with the spending of parts moving out of town, people moving out of town, sometimes absenteeism with any committees. I feel like that's a good thing for members of the pointing committees to stay in touch with the OS. So I just think that the one year to be, except that they're fluid, even almost all our worst, especially with this project. Still in the discussion phase, planning phase, we don't really have a project per se. So I think if this particular committee, I think I would probably could very easily be swayed with regard to the other committee. Because again, a project is up and going running. We see it at the fishing time. So again, it would make sense to for that committee to function till it ends. This particular committee, I would just say one year seems fine.
Okay.
But that one year included the same point that we have.
Say that again?
If we were, if we wanted to do the appointments year to year, it would be, this is the appointment of our.
The moderator and the director. Yeah.
Yes, so they'd be tired of the three appointments.
They would have to.
I would think yes.
Yeah, for sure. That's, yeah. Yeah, it's sort of two separate things, right? There's like, how we appoint people to the building committees, which is where you need the director and the moderator, which we're now sort of doing. And then there's the duration of the appointment. The appointment, the duration of the appointment is one year. The same group has to do the appointments every year. The duration is longer, then you do it once and it's sort of done. Do you have any preferences, moderator or thought?
I just, I do have a general question about the process. It's something I asked for a minute about what's, what my job and all that. So, so not effort on the building end, it's a thing, my job is to think about the process. So I want to make sure it's the fact. As we're looking at appointing this committee, I understand that people who are interested in it are the ones who are involved already initially with project in sets. Question is, is the rest of the community, have they been informed of the fact that this is going to be happening? And have they had a chance to, let's say, put their name in that sort of thing? So that's, so that's the question I want to ask before we move forward. Just do I have a sense of how, how that is?
Yeah, that's a wonderful question. Have we advertised recently? Because I know we originally took the feasibility committee. Like, did we change the charge of the feasibility committee or did we reappoint them or?
We appointed.
Feasibility.
I think they reappointed, made them to the.
And that made them to the meeting. So.
Then in.
So we didn't re-advertise, right, for the building to commit their name.
Were we taking appointments? We advertised in passing. They wanted to be reappointed for that.
Yeah.
So we did directly a appointment.
Yeah, but there wasn't a specific, so because a lot of times when you create a new committee, right, there's sort of a specific.
I'm not sure if this meeting, did we have a question?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I would say I prefer seven.
I think seven. I think there's six people here that are on it currently. So Dennis, what are your thoughts first on the duration of the appointments? Do you have any opinion about that? And then also any opinion on whether or not we should sort of do a new advertisement for this and then wait to see who else comes in? Do we open it up or do we just sort of appoint the folks that are here now? Because we went through that open process as far as the annual reappointment.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As far as the duration, in my 27 years of experience, I've been on quite a few, been involved in quite a few building projects. And in all of my experiences, a building committee is usually assembled and stays assembled for that project until its completeness, at which time then the appointing authority dissolves the committee. However, I am perfectly content with the annual vote, if that's what the board wishes. I don't see any negative to it, except that perhaps it's not really necessary. There's always an opportunity if people leave for whatever reason, and that does happen from time to time, especially in a project like this that can take several years, then we would have to consider additional applicants. And that's acceptable and in par for the course. But that's my two cents on that. So I'm agreeable to what, whatever the board wants to do. I think that the, the majority of the applicants, Mr. Chairman, that we have, have already served on the, on the DPW feasibility committee, have a great deal of background and experience already. With the exception of one individual, I believe John Westling is probably the only new individual to that list. And we all know Mr. Westling is currently the public works director for the town of Parkington and brings with him a wealth of knowledge and experience. And I'm very pleased to see his name on that list. So as far as I'm concerned, the list that you have in front of you this evening is good with me.
Okay, wonderful. And there are so two things that I want to go back to the moderator on. One is even if we appoint all six here tonight, there's still a vacancy. So that's sort of, you know, so that gives us some opportunity. Somebody says, hey, wait a minute. If you can say, well, there's a vacancy, then great. Does that sort of?
That's exactly kind of how I was thinking about this. So I don't know if this is a time, something of issue we get to. We must appoint tonight if we can wait. But if it's, we must appoint. I'm very comfortable with the individuals that we have. I just want to make sure others have enough to, sure. Because we don't know where that time when Ross might be, if somebody might just move to town. Or now they know about it and say, oh, I want to help with this. So we want to make sure that that opportunity is available for others to apply.
Yeah.
And be considered like everybody else.
Yeah. So Maury and Steve, what are your thoughts on that?
I could go anywhere. I mean, we could certainly hold off one meeting and put the, put it out to the public and see if anybody would be interested. I mean, this is great pool candidates. You know, I would say I'd be highly doubtful, you know, that I would select somebody I didn't know from citizen at college in exchange for any one of these things. Also that, so again, in my opinion, you know, most likely just be going, let's just say, assume three people put their name forward. We'll be deciding between that vacancy. I think these are certainly, I mean, I know most everybody on this list, I think, or everybody on this. So, and they all bring either background in building construction or, you know, a cow. There's little Ryan has got a great background. Again, Fox and Hydralisk, things of that nature. So he's not got a budget. So again, I think it's great pool candidates.
Okay, great. So it sounds like, I don't want to make an assumption, but if we're okay, we could. Sounds like people are comfortable appointing the six that are here, knowing that there's going to be a vacancy. And if somebody comes in, obviously that's interested, there's a vacancy, you see them to appoint them. Is that fair?
I'm very comfortable with that. Yeah.
Okay. All right. The, the, my only comment would be regarding the appointment duration. Clearly filling a vacancy is not a problem. One fear that I have is that if you have somebody and you've seen this in the past, that gets on a committee that's highly disruptive for whatever reason, you can't unappoint somebody. So at least that's my understanding. Right? So.
And that's actually what Sidwell says, but from a purely technical perspective, unless there's something written that says there is a process to appoint somebody. Yes, there is nothing you could do about it.
That's right.
There's all the things one could do, like ask the question.
Yeah.
Would you like to still be on? Why? Now, having said all.
Yeah.
And I know that you're not talking about this, but let me just sort of go get a little bit tangential here. Sometimes there are members on a committee that, let's say, who ask those questions that are outside the box, which maybe make people feel uncomfortable, yet it's important that they're on the committee because they don't think like everyone else does.
That's great.
And I think those people are just as important as all the ones who have a long, full background.
Oh, yeah.
So, so I know you're not talking about those, you know. So if we have a person like that, that's fine. The one that's like, oh, if it's outside the box, everyone else has to be forced to go beyond their comfort level. I love it when those people want committees, especially when you're seven or the same.
Yeah.
But the other person, if you're talking about, yeah, that, that could be problematic in your, and I wish there was some easier mechanism to sort of deal with that.
And I, I think I'd rather care on the side of sort of, sort of, you know, I mean, I, I agree about appoint them till, till for the duration of the project. And, you know, worst case scenario, if you've got somebody that's being highly disruptive, still just one vote and it's unfortunate. But the fact of the matter is, you know, that's the democratic process. And I'd rather have people there that are critical and asking questions and being thoughtful and sort of taking an alternative or approach or interview. But the fact of the matter is, you know, that's the democratic process, and I'd rather have people there that are critical and asking questions and being thoughtful and sort of taking an alternative or boundary view than not, so. Or, that's what I'm, yeah. Okay, so I think.
I think this was a little bit, actually, we did have somebody that stepped away, I think, who got a town. So I think we had at least one or two other people that were on, well, actually, this was one. One of the first that was on the committee, because I remember they were a DPW director and, oh, you spelled one, yeah, Phil Motter, somewhere. So we had people doing, that's an reason I was getting on.
Yeah, so from a process perspective, does the board need to vote separately and then that sort of a hot vote? And then we sort of use that vote and ask for a broader vote, or do we don't?
I think.
I don't think, like, it doesn't matter, sort of, in the spirit of the law, because we all agree, right?
That the board has one vote.
Right.
Would tend to, we've got a vote, I mean, you vote, you put that one, and then.
Okay, so with that, I will take a motion from one of the board members for the board to, if this is what you want to do, appoint these six folks. We'll second it, we'll pass it, that'll be our votes. Then we'll call for a vote that includes the moderator and the director, and that will be the majority of those three will then be the final appointments. So with that, I will take a motion.
Did you want to do all six names on the motions?
I think so, because I think we, we all agree, so, yeah, I'm, that's.
Okay, I can, I can do that. I would move that the board has selected vote to appoint Andrew Leonard, John Denno, David O'Brien, Rick McGuire, John Westling, and Dan Lazzars, Daniel Lazzars, to the, as members of the DPW Building Committee for a term to expire upon the completion of the building project or the dissolution of the committee by the board selection. I'll second.
All those in favor, aye. You're in section of the board. And so now I will call for a motion from either the moderator, the director, or the board to appoint. Do you have any questions or concerns about these six?
Not a lot, so if I can suggest maybe reasons, you guys make a motion.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Yeah.
They all have to work with this guy.
Yeah.
We can make it the command.
Ah, you can, you can be the tiebreaker, yeah.
During game?
Good.
That's kind of like the one that got tells me the best way to.
All right, perfect. So does anyone want to make a motion on behalf of the board?
I move that the board has selected vote to appoint Daniel Lazzars, Jonathan Coleman, David O'Brien, Rick McGuire, and John Weston to the DPW Building Committee for a term to expire upon the completion of the building project or the dissolution of the committee by the board selection.
I second that motion for all six of those.
Okay, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, you're in section for these six appointees. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Chairman, if you will, tell us a note, actually, you are correct, because one of the three is remote, you need a roll call.
All right, roll call vote, board selectmen, aye.
No, roll call, aye.
Oh, well, we're one voting, so, sorry, we are.
Six times, same, right?
We can just now roll call for that one motion, yeah.
So I say aye.
And in your, and in your day, you're.
David, aye.
Dennis Westgate, aye.
Great.
Steven Magellian.
Aubrey Mello, aye.
That's I'm aside, let's just go for it.
So I'm going to just say two more things real quick.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure we, let everybody know, there's still more open spot, so let's make sure we advertise that, so that this, if someone else is interested, that they can come forward. That is important, then I want to make sure that we have. Another thing I wanted to just mention, I wasn't expecting any discussion, really one about Kelly, so I wasn't sure what to say, that I could just take a minute. I wear a cricket for twenty-four days, Monday, and she comes for. Kelly, you're still out there, you're the best. Thank you very much, you saved my butt all at once on Tom and four, and we'll miss you. So, just want to say.
Great. Next up are our annual appointments. And first, we have Eric Russell. And so this, this entity is wants to be a full member, but the motion said associate member.
Our. Do you want to do this individual?
Oh, yeah, I guess.
Eric is going to step up.
Yes, I got you, okay, so all three of them are in here, it's one motion, okay. Got it, that's what I asked, so this is one motion for all three of these, I'm fine with that.
It's just difficult to read, so do you want to try to do it, like you mentioned, Eric, so do you want to appoint Eric as now a full-time member for three-year term?
I think if we can, I think the words appear right, if we just read this, right? We're reappointing, yeah, yeah.
And I would just explain to the public, there's a few members here that are all voting from associates. Okay?
Yeah, okay.
So I move that the board has selected vote to reappoint Robert Adams as associate member of zoning board of appeals for a three-year term. To appoint Eric Russell as a full member of zoning board of appeals for a three-year term. And to appoint David Servak as full member of conservation commission for a two-year term.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're in section. And just so folks know, what Mr. Magellian was referring to is two of these folks were associate members, which are, have a voice on the committees, but not a vote. Unless there's a full-time member that's not available. So two of these folks are transitioning their roles from associate member to full-voting member of the committees.
And there is supporting documentation in this particular case, Mr. Russell is picking up, and he is taking the seat of Richard DeShardt, who stepped right in the right way.
All right, board of selectmen, discussion.
Tell them about the conservation.
That was part of the motion, yeah, all three of those were one, one vote, that we discussed. So Zero Broke Street updating.
So for the board, I am hoping to have a little bit more of an update, so basically, just essentially, that's over. I am meeting with, trying to arrange, finalize a compromise meeting tomorrow with Mr. Goodman's office attorney, just to have a discussion as far as the dispute between Zero Row from Ray that they own. They have provided notice to us that they're reading the deed for the town, but it's actually evolving. They, they own, so meeting with them on one introductory, just to make sure that we can get to know each other and also get their perspective as far as the nature of the dispute. I have agreed by town council, I do have a lot of questions as far as sort of how we got there, so I'm just trying to get that, that data done from everyone to better report back to the board. And as I get information, I'll report back, and I just have this on the July. The main important thing is that, in case there's anyone out there, at any point, you know, one of the things that we, you know, we're here to do is also serve residents as well as business owners. Want to make sure that if there is some level of investment, improvements that people are trying to do, that we're here to support, facilitate. We don't want to try to jack anyone doing that, here it's unique, that very often you get complaints about permitting processes providing that sort of getting in the way. But here, the first one, the town purchased that Zero Row, there's something identified by surveyors for, again, that basically, they're interpreting a difference of ownership of, of land. So that, you know, needs to be resolved not only for their claimants, but also we need to make sure that the town's interest in acquiring that property gets maintained. And if there is anything we need to do, we can walk or walk or reach for small.
So, I mean, ultimately, it's a boundary line, right? That's essentially the question.
You know, the tree that was referenced within the deed two hundred years ago is no longer there. So, you know, this is, and I've had instances where a very simple effort and identifying survey going outside has five different properties. So it's important to get to the bottom of it, so, you know, not only for both our stakes, but to make sure that it really is localized to one safe boundary change, and that it doesn't impact other properties that, you know, clearly the town has other concerns.
You know, and earlier, of course, in this meeting's agenda, we have secured your contractor surveying property on mechanic tree. It's a light and formal duty, surveys in advance, so you don't have any surprise, you don't want to be rectifying problems. At this level of government, I don't want to be rectifying problems, captain, chief members. You know, let's get it right, the first time service that we see boundaries, so, you know, it's going to be a little bit exciting for AFRS, so let's make sure that we understand the boundaries and just where. So, yeah, it'd be great if you could keep us up to speed on this and forward any documents that come, you know, the end of the try to listen, always be interested and see exactly what the argument is. So, appreciate it.
Great, anything else on Zero Broke Street? Next up is the approval of the Housing Production Plan Advisory Committee chart. That was included in the packet, page thirty-six. Any questions, comments, or feedback from the board?
I think it was pretty good.
Okay, my only question would be, a housing production plan clearly is primarily focused on affordable housing, and I'm guessing that that's pretty standard across the board in the Commonwealth. That's what these things are designed to address, is that fair? The only reason I'm asking is there has been a significant amount of fifty-five-plus housing built in Austin, and I didn't know if it would be appropriate for some part of this study to include an analysis, a recommendation, a guideline around not only affordable housing, but also fifty-five-plus housing, or other potential types of housing that we think should be sort of managed strategically.
In my experience, housing plans are looking at how the town is meeting the needs of all residents, all agents, all different types of house. So if we've had a number of senior housing developments that have occurred, then that would of course be taken into consideration as far as, one, is it the type of housing that then meets the needs of seniors? Two, you know, is this something that maybe it means that we need somewhat of a shift, because there's that population or residents in town that don't have those opportunities? So I would envision this plan would actually take into consideration recent building activity of those developments to not only verify that we're moving in that direction, start meeting that need, but also identify whether or not we need to pivot and focus on other types of housing as well. And one of the things this has identified, you know, also compliance with the D, the communities, and specifically Commonwealth question boards, trying to also satisfy workforce housing in addition to.
I think when I was reading last, it was a dozen years ago, our previous housing production plan, they tried to go current trends as well, so they're going to probably draw some comparisons to our last report, what was popular then, when the current trend is a thousand. I'm sure CMRC will have a lot of giving good guidance and process.
That may be one of those specific strategies that comes out to provide more of that, that focus. One of the things that many towns developing these, try to balance is that there's a lot of people who've been a long time residents in town, many of them maybe older that are looking to move out of their current house or that size, or they're looking for brand ownership, more of a community rental situation. You also are part of a larger region that even for seniors, say, on the other side of four ninety-five, aren't looking to stay in the basic region, but maybe this is affordable. Even though it may not meet the definition of affordable housing. So all that's going to be added into consideration, and if it's basically an analysis that identifies, you know, a lot of senior houses, none of it's affordable, you know, how are you meeting those needs that still might be, you know, focused?
I don't consider these kind of how to.
Well, that's where it comes down to those, those tools. Some towns may have inclusion or zoning bylaws, and that they would require for every seven to eight of those market rate units to one. So it becomes really a question as far as which tools, you know, would often like to take advantage of, to maybe buy some of those, those housing options. What are some other ways to achieve that? The other thing is that MBTA communities makes specific reference that there can engage restriction. So there's a lot of things, the state now needs thousands, forty, more, and most of the mass communities that then basically, so you can, you can't fit any age restrictions. So there's a lot of things that the town is going to have to balance as it undergoes this plan update. And it's one of the reasons why it's a fraud subsection of town doors, get a greater perspective, because if this was just a housing update, it would be easy to have affordable housing. This is really possible, a lot of town reason, and it's an important time in that sort of path of this discussion.
So do we need to, so I totally agree with this, it looks great, it just seems very focused on affordable housing when I read the charge, right? Charge with overseeing the town's process, working with Central Massachusetts, CMRC to evaluate affordable housing needs, goals, and strategies, including compliance with MBTA, community legislation. I get later on, it's sort of vaguely, or it's less specific, but that first sentence sort of strikes me, so I'm wondering if we can approve this on sort of the condition that we add language in there that covers all housing types. And we can even just say, instead of affordable housing, we could just say, the, to evaluate all housing needs, goals, and strategies, instead of afford, just take out affordable. And then you maybe could put in parentheses, for example, affordable fifty-five plus MBTA, whatever. Is that fair?
Why don't we go one step further, we'll just take a two-week hiatus, do it a little better in finer detail, make some changes that you would like to see.
Yeah.
And then we'll just approve it at that point in time, because we don't have the technical, so I don't, I don't think that.
Not on this thing, huh?
Yeah, the charges under effect, a function of the, sure, we approve it this week or the next week, so they'll give you a minute to, or a couple of weeks to make sure that you're more comfortable, or if you have changes you'd like to make, even if they're just small, like, you know, maybe where you're there, I'll do that.
Yeah, and if we can then do a very final approval of, so then we're either last meeting or realistically first meeting in August for anyone to submit application at large.
Yeah.
I know that because we've signed a contract with CMRC, there's always a sort of organization time they need on their side to bring their staff up or to start facilitating. So I just really, I want to have us to be able to have meetings together beginning to mid-August, so that we can make sure that we're not sort of like delaying CMRC from, again, sorry.
Can we, can we start advertising the positions?
Oh, yeah, we can.
So let's just do that. Right, let's start advertising the positions, and then we, I mean, right, because this is 99% there, they just stay on affordable. So, yeah, is that, I, I don't want to delay us by two weeks.
Yeah.
Because of what I just said, it's not that important.
Yeah, no, we could just, we could do that as well.
Okay.
So it sounds like we're pointing, actually, we're pointing process, we're giving all these through July.
Yeah.
The pointing process is going to happen, obviously.
Well, that would be if you were waiting for a final approval of the charge.
Oh, I see.
So if we are just dealing with that middle sentence, that's all it is.
We can, you can basically sign a set of members, I'm fine with the composition, like, I don't have any other questions on anything that's here.
Quite honestly, you could, you could remove the word affordable, so it's just housing needs, goals, and strategies.
Totally.
And that, that could easily be it. I mean, that's, quite honestly, that's the easiest thing to achieve. It's all incorporated in that, right?
Totally. That, that was my, that would be my suggestion at this point, is to just approve it as is and just stay on affordable, and then everything else is automatically.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Don't, not just narrowing.
So basically, the second line, the second paragraph, you're affordable.
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just kind of write it like that.
Okay.
And just for anyone that is watching, that does not mean that we are not going to be addressing affordable housing. That is one of the reasons to have a housing plan.
The primary reason to have a housing plan.
Production is in it. It's just to make sure that it's not viewed as, it is limiting us from also getting a variety. One of the things is getting that 100 to 120 area median income is also important for work, workforce housing, though it's not defined as affordable by the state.
That's right. And the other, the other reason I'm bringing it up is because we also want to make sure that we don't eliminate things like 300-unit apartment buildings on a country road, right? So a housing production plan can help us identify target areas for, and, and we want to have all sorts of housing, but we want to have them in appropriate places, and we want to be thoughtful and strategic, and not just let developers dictate where we put things. So we want to be able to say, yes, we want affordable housing, here are the great areas to do that. Yes, we want to have some apartment living, here are the areas to do that. We want single-family houses, we want multi-family houses, we want affordable, we want 55 plus. Want to make sure we're meeting the MBTA rules, but we want to be thoughtful and proactive in terms of how and where, and when those things are targeted.
Right, if you think of a couple of the projects out there, let's just say we talk about Rockwell Meadows, and we talk about Up and Ridge. You say, those are beautiful layups, and those hold great promise for affordable housing. However, their needs are strictly.
Yeah.
So if you took that home, and that would, you say, okay, maybe you could take a, you know, that type of project, a certain percent of it as affordable, and, and, you know, there's another way where you're, again, crossing and fighting. See, like, including the other demographics.
Absolutely. That's, that's maybe you need to reschedule that, same. So there are votes, the vote we can take, and then by.
So I, my recollection was that there was a vote, a vote that the board should have already taken to authorize applying and submitting basically an application to the state. We then have to, by a certain date, identify a bylaw for town meeting. That should be in 2024. My recollection, watching some of your previous meetings, that Paul had already taken care of hearing the, the meeting that you had on top there, and then notifying the state so that we can make sure that we get our designation for the last for this 2022 to 2023. Correct. That way, if we do have affordable housing created, and we need certain thresholds, we can also have a beginning policy, Parker, getting a one-year, two-year hold, so that we can make sure that there's not a project that is not a character of town. That's what works, though. Except, you know, we're working to make sure that, and, or if they harbor, that's where it's where they face, maybe, say, say.
Great. I will take a motion.
Also, I'll second. I move that the board vote to create the housing production plan steering committee as proposed, to request that the Board of Housing Trust, Conservation Commission, Economic Development Committee, planning board designate representatives to serve on the committee, and to advertise to resident and large bidding opening for appointment at a future meeting.
I'll second.
And I will add a friendly amendment to remove the word affordable from the charge, from the second line.
I was trying to say, in the motion.
Yeah.
We're not actually accepting the charge, so we should include that in the motion.
It says, it says as proposed.
Correct.
I was very clear. Okay.
I'll second.
Then, okay, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
You can have an action. All right. Next up, we already sent our contracts through.
So definitely looking at that, because you realize that I did not send the contracts because they were so boring language, and between three of them, they represent around 26 pages. I figured, I'll just send it by separate email, and I expanded it, and I realized that I did not send it out. So one of the questions would be, so basically, the town can contract it out, procurement services to, for many of the guys who purchase furniture, equipment for the library, and all those things. It's a standard contract for these, these firms. I can send it out, so you can take a look if you wanted to then authorize execution pending by distributing, so you can take a look and answer any questions. Unfortunately, it would be something that I don't want to, well, given the, we could be waiting six months to get a chair, unfortunately, so.
Are you both looking at a chair?
Any questions, thoughts?
Well, I guess I would just ask you, creative office resources, what are they providing, and what is Tupper Library Interiors providing? I just see the variation, it's basically two of one value of the contracts. What exactly are they providing, and, I hate to be frivolous, but based on the size of the building and the contract we're standing on the building, I'm sure this is a reasonable amount of money to spend to furnish it. So, so I guess if you could just give me a profile, give a, I think, always in it.
It's about $150,000, right?
Yes.
I mean, we have bookshelves and desks, tables, that would be the office, I would think that would be a good office.
So for example, the one that is for 96,000, that is for library shelving and channels. That specifically is for, that was the Tucker Library Interiors, you know, various, all the shelving, all kick plates. You got some of these lists, some of the headers for all those shelving. That's what is associated under this, this contract. And it's different material, some of it is wood cast, some of it is metal, depending on, on locations.
Basically, it would be everything needed to furnish it inside her potential books.
Correct. The other one, the amount of 46,000, that is for office furniture, it's study tables. So you're talking about nominating tables, surfaces, legs, pedestals, not computer tables? Not computers. And also some bookcase materials, and some, some things that would be, got the library shelving, you know, that's big, long ones, more smaller, for, for example, something that is 30 inches by 64 inches, so smaller shelving bookcase that may be in a study.
And.
But you've renewed, the committee's renewed it, it's accurate? Yes, yes, exactly.
It's a 49,000?
I mean, they was, yes, this one was 49,183.54 cents, and the, and the first one came in at 96,877.55 cents.
Questions?
Okay.
I'm good.
In my summary of the motion, I move that the board's line of vote to authorize the town meeting to execute contracts with creative office resources in the amount of 49,183.54 cents, and with flexible, like, period, of 96,877.55 cents. Pictures of urgent.
Is there a motion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
You can have an action. Next up is the review of the 2022, 2023 town meeting and budget calendar.
It's really wonderful to think about all the work you just did in creating town meetings now. On to go. So, basically, this, this meeting is the same basic schedule as updated to reflect 22, 23 calendar years. It was in 2021, because of the need to go tax classification before November 15, and because of the Tuesday, November 8 election day, we talked about second town, special town meeting on Tuesday, November 1st, and then classification on November 7th, not the Tuesday. You could meet on Wednesday instead of that, that Monday, but I view this as really, this is the guide. We're not establishing, necessarily establishing the board's meeting scheduled by this. Many of these are things that, if I identify, more review period begins Monday, that just means that, you know, that's what we are going to run this time, we're starting that, that process. So there are some firm deadlines based on data venue, town meeting, special town meeting, that then back out in terms of, we have such requirements, get warrants out to residents and all those things, get things posted. So, but we've reviewed it internally, shared with finance director as well. You know, again, it's, we're just modifying the rule, we're not recreating the rule, so. But it, it helps in, in not only planning out the fall, but then also the year, and really it gave me an opportunity to sort of get a better handle as far as how the town scales things, what files are, they said, how it impacts.
Great, great. Questions?
Which is, I just think a later date would be interesting to decide, you know, an annual town meeting is a Monday a good day for it, or a Wednesday? You know, if we have that type of flexibility, how do you have a discussion for, you know, August?
For annual town meeting, it always needs to, it always falls on the first Thursday of May. Special town meeting, there's not a defined day in the bylaw. There, looks like there's practice, where it's about a Monday, which is interesting, rather than Thursday. But, you know, realistically, I hate saying that you're only going to have a couple of weeks, because then we're going to actually have to be voting to vote in the morning at our last July meeting for August.
Very good. Need anything from us on that?
No.
Very good. Okay, next up, we have minutes, which we're going to pass over. So does someone want to read the motion about going into an adjournment for executive session?
Thank you. I move that the selectmen vote the header into the executive section in reference to Master General Law Chapter 214, section 1, which is in Master General Law, Chapter 4, Section 7, laws 220, on the succeed, sets financial assistance to residents in need, and not reconvene in vocal session.
I was looking, I would second the motion, Stephen Retellian, Maring, and OI.
Red side aside, you can have an action. Thank you, board members, thank you, folks on the phone, for participation. See you next time.